Like to call for order, May eighteenth, twenty fifteen, Richmond City School Board Meeting. Madam Clerk.
For the board members who are present, please respond. Mr. Sternberg?
Here.
Ms. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Bollman?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Harris-Promit?
Doctor Jones?
Mrs. King-Williams?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
You have a question, Mr. Chair?
Okay, is this time, is anyone in need of interpreter services?
Alguien necesita intérprete en español?
Madam Clerk?
The next item is one point zero three, of pledge allegiance and enrollment signs.
Uh, Mr. Sternberg, would you need us to dispatch religion?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item is one point zero four, I just have two changes, ones to add, to receive for action, but transfers and the others to receive for action, productivity requests.
Mr. Sternberg?
The motion was made by Mr. Sternberg, a second, and by Ms. Gray, to advance with gentle. Thank you.
Aye.
Can you close any distinctions? The agenda has been backed as amended and that the record reflective enjoy of Mrs. Harris-Promit. The next item is item two, public information.
Anyone who would like to address the board tonight?
We have one person who needs to sign up, I'm sorry, in the main, so what is your pleasure?
Okay, three minutes individuals. Five minutes for the board.
Marion Brooks.
Yes, I believe we had a person sign up, are you Marion Brooks?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, so she will, excuse me?
I will give it to, I knew that.
Okay, all right, so that's five minutes.
Good evening, honorable commissioners. My name is Nikita Doggett, as a proud citizen of Virginia. I would like to introduce myself, while I no longer live in Virginia, I was a resident here while attending VCU. I also have many beloved relatives and a trust of the area as well as friends. And I come to you today because I am a union representative for the bus drivers as well as the monitors. I come to you today to inform you of the good, bad, and indifferent in the department. Many of whom I represent have many questions and concerns about the state of the Transportation Department. One, outsourcing, or talks of outsourcing. Two, the budget and wage increases. Three, dues deductions or payroll deductions, changes in that, as well as employee and management relations, or relationships, I should say. After canvassing the school bus drivers and management, there has been a mention of plans and or talks of outsourcing, and what does the school board and or the head of transportation want to accomplish with outsourcing? Or by outsourcing? It is my observation and understanding that the majority of your drivers and monitors are excellent employees, ninety to ninety-five percent. Only a small portion of that applies, and it's causing issues for their coworkers, for their students, parents, teachers, and principals of Richmond City. Most drivers have built a trust, trusting in a strong relationship and bond with the parents and the students that they pick up and transport to and from school. I believe that there shouldn't be any threats or plans to punish bus drivers, or the good bus drivers and monitors, by outsourcing or contracting out. Maybe it's time to get rid of a few bad apples and replace them with a few good oranges. In addition, I believe if outsourcing does occur, there will be less control over the department, specifically security and quality control. Not many people are as qualified or experienced driving children as their current employees. Drive, um, we ask that you keep current bus drivers and to remain in-house. Secondly, the budget and wage increases. I've been informed by a reliable source that the Transportation Department is currently operating in the red. This mishandling of the budget has caused mistrust between drivers, monitors, and management. During my canvass, it is my understanding that the department has spent money on new buses, equipments, and other electronic devices for everyday operations. It is also said that there were new official vehicles. Now, I'm not saying that those, the equipment and devices aren't needed, but I do believe that some of the money could have been allocated to hire new employees, more qualified drivers. In my understanding that, the average is about ten to thirteen dollars an hour, and the drivers have not seen an increase for about six to eight years, and the last increase was twenty-five cents. The last person to get implement, or to help implement this raise was Larry Doggett, and he is now the president of Local Union Five Seventy-Two. This is causing a disparity between income and the cost of living. My third point would be dues deductions. Today I received a memo from the union steward, Ms. Marion Brooks, addressing, addressed to all members. The payroll deduction is changing, and of, of the employee benefits broker. The letter states that new broker, the new broker no longer deduct voluntary plans, and the list of continued payroll deductions does not include Launa, Laborers of the National Union of North America, public service employees, local union five seventy-two. Many members have taken the steps to fill out these authorization forms in order to pay not only their union dues, but other deductions, including their insurance, and many other carriers. This has been a past practice that Local Five Seventy-Two asks or requests that this method, this method remain. In addition, employee manager relations have been greatly damaged, and I believe that the morale of the department is down, and Local Five Seventy-Two just wants to help the department, as well as management, the school board, and the school system, lift the morale and just shake, shake the department into good shape. Thank you, my name is Nikita Doggett. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the board tonight?
Good evening, my name is Robert Bullock. Previously on the last meeting, I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't know about the change venue. If you went on the calendar, it was stated the meeting was at City Hall. You had access of like forty to fifty people that came to City Hall. And due to my transportation, I have to do it in a proper timeframe. I, I had to go to City Hall, and the meeting was here. I was very disappointed that it was not put in place where, or was told to the public that the meeting was going to be at Martin Luther King. I was told, informed by Ms. Lewis, at the last hour, that they, I could have went to board docs. I had no information on board docs, and nor neither did anyone else. So how many other people that had an opportunity that was important, as that meeting was last boarding? How many other people missed the meeting, but I know it was access of over fifty people that was at City Hall? And it was very angry, and I was also angry too. I mean, you all have to do a better job of knowing, letting the public know of what's going on. And that was a huge, huge mistake. And it should, that should have never happened again. Especially when you have a public forum, and you have, you're asking for public comment, and it was, and no one knew. I mean, I was very disappointed, and I'm still disappointed, because I didn't get the opportunity to have my say. And ultimately, you all voted on something that was very important to the community. And especially over on the south side, and I mean, it was very, very disturbing. And another thing I want to talk about is this whole deal with this deasgo, with the whole thing. I'm very disturbed with how it all shook out. It's supposed to have been done in April, and to this day, you still have owner reads that don't know that it didn't happen, and they, they wasn't informed that it was, it's going to be changed this September. I'm just baffled it was going to be changed this September. And I'm just, I'm just disturbed of how Richmond Public Schools is giving the information out to the community and people that's involved. Also, if you're going to make this a whole thing, you're going to do it, do it right. There's a lot of things that needs to be done, that we need to sit down at the table, and we need to have some discussions with, and how it should be handled, and how it should be, it should be handled. Because ultimately, there's a lot of things that's a miss, when a miss, and that's why you didn't get the enough tickets sold, because it wasn't properly planned. So that's what's something I, I think, that I can sit down and talk with whoever to sit down and talk with. We need to get that together, and, and mix it, so we can make it a success.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to address the board tonight? Okay, see none, Madam Clerk?
Next item is item three, academic improvement items, three points you will want to see the updated mandate in school improvement.
Good evening, I'll be very brief. At this time, the four schools, Bouchal Thompson with an Armstrong are working on their asset maps, as reported in the Friday report. We will meet, Dr. Budden, Mr. Jefferson, myself will meet with VDOE on June the twenty-fourth to review the lesson plan feedback and observation feedback, evidence of PLC implementation, and the draft school professional development plans for next year at the school level. And that's where we all will have a report from you based on that June twenty-fourth meeting. In other school improvement news, we are still awaiting the graduation completion index academic reviews for with Armstrong, John Marshall, and Ugnat, but we anticipate receiving those in the near future.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
The next item is three point zero two, receiving accounts payable audit from the city auditor's office.
Good evening, my name is Joanna McCoy, and I'm with the city auditor's office with the city of Richmond. Tonight I've been given a presentation regarding the audit findings for the Richmond Public School and Council's payable audit. We completed our audit of the AP Division for the eighteen-month period ended December thirty-first, twenty thirteen. Our audit objectives were to evaluate the efficiency and effectiveness of the operation, identify the existence and effectiveness of internal controls, and verify compliance with regulations, policies, and procedures. This is our second audit of the accounts payable division. Our initial audit was done in two thousand and eight. During that audit, we identified significant control weaknesses and noncompliance for policies and procedures. I'm happy to say, when we came back this time to review the AP Division, we saw improvements had been made. They've implemented such items as positive pay. They've also implemented credit card payments or commercial payments to the vendors, in which they're getting a rebate for abortion of the payments. However, there are some areas for improvements for the internal controls. We also identified if fraud or waste were to occur, it would not be timely detected. However, I am pleased to say that during this audit, we noted no such occurrences. There were seventeen recommendations that were issued, for which the divisioners in precarious with all seventeen. Based upon the management responses, corrective actions have been taken or will be taken to address the items prior to calendar year end. We will verify the implementation status during our annual follow-up, which will be started in a few months. Thank you.
Mr. Bourne?
Thank you, this question is probably more for Mr. Westway. Usually, and maybe I just haven't identified it, but could you just sort of give us a general, your general thoughts on the audit, and out of those seventeen recommendations, or the ones from the last audit that we haven't implemented yet, could you just know whether or not those are things that you are planning to do on this side of the house, and sort of what the plan is going forward?
Yes, sir, our management response is attached and included there too, that we concur with the findings and with our plan for addressing each one. The time in which, some of it was factored into completing our staffing. We still had some vacancies that we're filling in as of now, so. But I think overall, pleased with the results, and where we'll be when we finish the implementation of these recommendations.
And, and all of Mr. Sternberg, the management response, that does or does not include the O.A. audit?
It does not, this is just related to this current audit. There'll be a separate follow-up for the outstanding items on all of the other audits.
Okay, okay, that was gonna be my question, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
The next item is three point zero three, receiving pay report on open enrollment.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, Dr. Budden, and school board members. My name is Harry Morgan, and I'll be presenting an overview on open enrollment process this evening. Just for the information purposes for our audience, open enrollment is a process that allows students in Richmond Public Schools and those that reside in the city of Richmond an opportunity to apply to an out-of-zone school. The term out-of-zone basically means that it refers to a school located outside of the zone where the student resides. Selection for open enrollment is determined via lottery process, and is based on the available space at a grade level and also at the school. Once a student is accepted to an out-of-zone school through open enrollment, he or she, he or she has the ability to remain through that terminal grade of that particular school, as long as they submit what we call an intent-to-return form, which is an annual form that they have to submit. It's based upon, of course, if they meet the designated date, and also complying with any open enrollment procedures or rules. Below you have basically the table, and it's just for your information purposes, a timeline that gives the former dates when many of the items were due, such as the intent-to-return window, and also the open enrollment window. And we extended the open enrollment window for Bedford, especially since we have a new program coming online to March sixth, twenty fifteen. On the following pages that are attached, we did list the numbers for the application numbers per grade level, and also for each school. I want to mention also to the public that open enrollment does not include our specialty schools, such as Maggie Walker and Abomax, which are governor's schools, as well as Franklin Military Academy. We also have open and community high schools, so those particular schools are not included in open enrollment. Give you a minute to review. And if you have any questions about the elementary, middle, or high school numbers, please let me know at this time.
All right, any questions for Mr. Morgan? Ms. Taylor?
How many seats were left at Bedford for open enrollment for students?
Well, the number that we accepted was two fifty-one, so everyone who applied got in. To this date, I believe a hundred and forty-one have registered, and that's for the entire school. So we're doing, we're going to ask the school to make phone calls for those other hundred that we still don't have an answer for, so we can determine if there'll be additional room for applications.
If that's the case, will that open enrollment process reopen to fill those additional seats?
Well, the actual process won't reopen, but we do have a caveat, so to speak, where you can place your child on the waiting list, and that begins May twenty-second through June fifth. So that goes for any of our open enrollment schools. Someone can come in and place their child on the waiting list.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Saps?
Mr. Morgan, you don't handle, does VPI not have open enrollment?
No, ma'am, and VPI is one of our preschools that is not under my program, so it's not under VPI's control.
Okay.
Ms. Larson?
Looking at the data, we only have data from this year, but I suspect that in schools that we might have seen jumps in this year for open enrollment applicants were probably Bedford and Ugnat. Is that correct, and do you know off the top of your head?
Traditionally, highest schools that people apply for are Thomas Jefferson and Ugnat High School.
Okay.
And then, of course, for middle school, Albert Hill, and now Bedford, of course, of course, Sandy jump as well.
Okay, so the numbers for Bedford jumped pretty significantly this year?
I would say so, because we've had two hundred and fifty slots that were open, and everyone who applied were accepted.
Okay. And do you, I'm just gonna keep asking questions. Did Ugnat, did you notice any differences this year? I'm just wondering if the new school, you know, made those numbers jump.
Not so much as far as maybe a number. We've always had persons interested in Ugnat, of course, and this new facility always helps. And I think that has had an increase in numbers. It may not be as significant as, as we would think, but Ugnat has always been one that's heavily requested.
Okay, Ms. Mohammed, follow up by Ms. Thompson.
Yes, is there logical reasons as to why you have, for Miles Jones, I'm on elementary, of course, Mason, they had eight in summer applicants, but none of them have been accepted. Do you know why that is?
No, I know that this time of year, principals have a tendency to be cautious because of staffing needs. They want to make sure that they can account for their end-zone population first. Sometimes we get further requests as we get closer to the end of the school year, and says, Mr. Morgan, I feel more comfortable now, and I can take more students. But that's initially what it is, they're very cautious to make sure they account for their end-zone.
They do communicate with you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Saps?
That, that's part of my follow-up question, so if I'm on the waiting list, someone new enrolls, if they live in the zone, do they bump me further down this list? Is there that space for me?
They wouldn't bump you per se, but let's say, for example, if we had an unaccounted boom of population in the zone, that potentially, you know, theoretically could happen. For example, if we didn't predict fifty kids that came all of a sudden kindergarten, of course, they would have to really think about how many extra kindergartens they could have there, so obviously. But we're pretty close usually in what we estimate, as far as the number of kids that come into a school.
So is there like a drop-in deadline that, on a particular day, we go with the numbers as they are, we start making sure that children have schedules and everything, anticipating that those individuals will be in these schools?
Well, from an open enrollment standpoint, we cut off June fifth for the waiting list. So after June fifth, my office will send out letters to parents, basically a final notice that says, if you have not been accepted by this date, then you're going to have to apply to your end-zone school. So yes, by June twelfth, everyone will have their letter in hand, hopefully that says that they either have been accepted to their school of choice, or they're going to have to return to their end-zone school.
Follow-up, Ms. Mohammed?
You said, if they are not accepted into their school of choice, they have to apply to their zone school?
No, they would, they would have to go back, actually, to the zone school.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Right, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
The next item is item four, your budgetary items, four point zero one, receiving fiscal year general finance AP budget update.
Mr. Chairman, more members, the, you have a memo I mailed it a little while ago. We'll get it down to town and post, to put it out on the board diary, and it'll be posted shortly. There's an update of a PowerPoint and a memo, providing with an overview of where we are at this point. City council appropriated nine million dollars in addition to the mayor's proposed budget on Friday. That gives us a number of one hundred and forty-five million, nine ninety-nine, six fifty-seven. From this year's adopted budget, that's an eleven million, one seventy-nine, eight fifty increase. Of that, because I'm going from the PowerPoint that I sent at this point, there was a million, five forty-one, eight fifty that was amended in this year's budget, that was for the truancy transfer. And so then there was, in addition to that million, five forty-one, the mayor proposed an additional six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And then council added their nine million on top of that for the total. And so of new money beyond the truancy, there's eleven, there's nine million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to work with. And so applying that, we still are working with our major initiatives list, and that gets us down through the green, or the mandates and required things that we need to maintain existing service levels, which was ten and a half million dollars, so that gets us nine point six million of the way through those items, which takes us down to the technology component. That still leaves us short on the academic approval plan, professional development days to go with that, the Bedford middle school model, salary adjustments, college and career readiness initiative, early reading math intervention, everything else that was below the line. And there's still on the, on the docket, a discussion to be had with the mayor's introduction of his proposed budget at the time. He recommended the possibility of up to ten million dollars predicated on some performance factors provided by the school board, of one-time money to be offered. This would be in addition to the nine million the council offered, so. We've still been also combing and analyzing everything. We have several major initiatives underway right now with secondary leveling, with the creation of the master schedules for next fall. So revisiting the staffing allocations for the secondary level, that could provide some additional resources we're allocating to meet some of these items that are still unfunded at this point. We have our March thirty-one enrollment ADM, which was an uptick from what we anticipated. So we're thinking we can also revise our forecast enrollment for next fall by probably a hundred and twenty, which will give us another eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. 120, which will give us another $872,000 in revenue over what we originally anticipated when we submitted the budget. So when we factor those things in and some alternative, the state's been working with to give us more latitude in how we use the school improvement funds that could cover some of the items that were in the content of these items on the major initiatives list, then we might be able to get this list down in the neighborhood of somewhere in need of another 5.2 million dollars. That's assuming that we don't do anything with items number 20 through 33 that were on that original list, which was early reading math, positions, the college career readiness, the school improvement hold harmless money of 500,000, weighted student funding allocation of 750, HR reorg, the communications audit implementation, school department, some of those smaller ticket items we might be able to take out of salary turnover and lapse next year during the year once we are underway and we get fall pass with school open enrollment, we get our September 30 enrollment numbers, and we see how we're stacking up with the budget next year, we might be able to compensate some of these smaller items. But if we were to eliminate all of those items, 19 through 33, I'm sorry, 20 through 33, 19's the salary adjustment. And we've looked at revising the salary adjustment downward from 1.7 to 1.5%. And then also reducing the PD days as a component of the academic improvement plan from five days to three days. And that's how we're looking at the possibility of getting the number down to 5.2 million as a gap at this point, factoring in the council's $9 million. So we'll have that information and we'll have more information for you tomorrow. We've been working through the fine, last, fine tuning of the details on the secondary master schedules. There was a team, the instruction team went out today to visit seven schools, I think. We're doing four more tomorrow. So I'll have better numbers to share with you at the board work session tomorrow night and to then for you to factor that into your consideration on how you want us to proceed from here. And that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Okay. Ms. Larson?
Just so I understand what I'm looking at on this spreadsheet.
Yes, ma'am.
Under one through six, are these the reductions that we talked about during the budget process? Or are these new reductions? Or is it a combination?
Which items?
On the, on your spreadsheet, on the, that was attached to the memo, yeah.
Okay. Items one through six?
Yes.
Those reductions, those are the reductions that were already there in the original?
They're, they're from the original budget that the board adopted?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And since then, you found some additional reductions that are then listed next to the green area?
That we don't have on this sheet. Oh, yeah, we do have on, no, we don't have those items listed on this sheet. We're going to provide you with another one either this evening or early tomorrow morning. It'll have some additional items on it that are not on here.
Okay. So since we adopted the budget and since you all have been working on finding more efficiencies and everything, how much more do you think you've found?
I think it's in the neighborhood of, our gap at this point is 15 million. And when we take items 20 through 33 off the table, 20 through 33 added up to 15,250, that's the top paragraph, second page of the memo, in that first paragraph, items 18 through 33 added up to 15,215. So if we eliminate those, that takes us down to That still leaves us, we're going to be at, with the other items that we're recommending, maybe $3 million more worth of items. We're down to somewhere around 5.2 million in gap without considering any leveling, the impact of any leveling allocations yet, because we don't have a number for that yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So understanding the process, tomorrow we're going to take a deep dive with our dear friend, Mr. Westbay, and really try to move forward. Won't be voting. Then we come back on next Tuesday, and we're going to need everybody to be prepared to again dive in once again to try to finalize it. He sent you some information today. He'll probably update some information on tomorrow. I know there's some of my colleagues that, and they're not able to be with us on tomorrow, but I'm sure Mr. Westbay will be available to answer any questions outside of meeting time. But it's going to be imperative that when we come on Tuesday, that we know that the goal is to leave that night having voted on finalization of the budget.
And also to be clear, the, any of the discussion of the mayor's one-time funding additional funding, they intend for that to be an amendment to this plan. So we're going to have to adopt without consideration of those funds at this point.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Westbay.
I'm sorry? Just, just so, for my, if you would mind, the rank order of these initiatives are recommendations for?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Westbay.
This is going to go on the board desk?
It is. It will be.
Okay.
In addition, we'll get another email either later tonight or early tomorrow.
When I got that email, I just wanted to make sure.
Will also be posted.
Not pretended to have heard it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Madam Clark?
Will we go to our next item? Mr. Chairman, let us acknowledge that you've been joined by your student, Devon Edmonds.
How are you, Devon? Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you.
The next item is 4.02, receive the financial statement for the month ending April 2015.
Mr. Chairman, before I make my remarks about this, we still have this one to pay with the director of finance. I'd also like to give congratulations to her and her team for the excellent report received on the external, the internal audit on the council panel. She's put a lot of hard work into that particular report. Monthly financial report, we've been, we're still projecting to be about where we said we thought we would be, which is close to zero for the end of this fiscal year. We included also an all funds view for you to see, just a recap summary of all the funds besides the general fund, which I think begins on page 18. All right. Page 18 gives you a recap by each fund, just showing projected balance here, but those funds carry over from one year to the next. They don't, they're not subject to the same rules as the general fund because they're self-sufficient. But no, we're still looking at 859,000 overall shortfall in revenues, and we anticipate slightly more than that even under expenditure on the budget side, which will offset that revenue shortfall. So we're still predicting to be pretty close to zero when we finish this year. A little too close to zero. That's it. Unless you have questions for me.
Questions for Mr. Westbay? All righty. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item is five, your board actions, 4.01, receive for action, human resources actions.
Good evening, school board members. I present to you tonight the human resources actions for approval, which include the nomination of six employees, the change of contract of six employees, and the transfer of two employees. Other actions for information include the resignation of three employees, the retirement of 16 employees, and the death of one employee.
Okay, we will, we have some items we need to discuss in close.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Phillips? Okay. Ms. Epps?
Mr. Phillips, could you explain to me as quickly as you can the difference between, well, I know a resignation and a retirement, but why would an individual resign and then retire?
Well, actually, a person can retire at any point that they, they choose to after they've been vested and they become eligible. So a person could actually exit from us, not choosing to retire, but then come back later on and retire through the Virginia retirement system. So that's a, that's a personal decision.
So if they resign and we accepted the resignation, they can then come back and say, "No, I don't want to resign. I'd rather retire"?
Right. They change their status, yes.
And there's no timeframe on that?
No.
Okay.
Because the individual, if they're eligible, they can resign when they choose to.
Okay.
Excuse me, retire at the, whatever they want to. Yes.
Okay.
The next item is 4.02, receive for action and request for the superintendent to be allowed to serve as an adjunct faculty professor.
Okay, Dr. Benton?
Mr. Coleman, more members, the information attached outlines per contract agreement, anything that goes over two weeks, such as adjunct faculty has to come to the board for approval for me to do that. Just recently received a request from ESU, which is also attached to.
I was asking, there's one or two requests that says.
One.
Virginia Union, I thought you just said, you just received one from the ESU.
Yeah, it should be BSU, just said Virginia Union. No, there's only one.
Ms. Mohammed had a question?
I, I don't have a question. I was, well, actually, do we need to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. If there are no more questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Excuse me, Ms. Till?
As outlined in the document, it is once a week. It is after hours. It is typically a semester course.
I think you said after hours.
Excuse me?
You said after hours.
After hours, business hours, yes.
Do you know at this time of the, the day of the week it would be?
Can't hear you, Ms.
Do you know at this time what day of the week it would be? Or is that fluctuating?
That's worked out with the university, with the schedule. So I would then work out that it was the best day, like it would, we know it would be on a Monday.
Okay, Ms. Mohammed?
I move that we authorize the superintendent to accept the adjunct teaching slash professor position with Virginia State University.
Second. Moved in second?
Motion was made by Ms. Harrison, I'm in second, by Mr. Stone, Mr. Storyman. Ms. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Okay. Attorney, Ms. Epps? Okay, you're right. That was my fault. I gave us opportunity to ask questions before they're being. Is anyone in the discussion? Ms. Till?
Thank you. I just wanted to voice a concern that our school's district as a whole is going through quite a few changes for this upcoming school year, 2015, 16. We have an academic improvement plan that we're putting into place. We, we just have a lot of two-way things that we need to address as a district as a whole. We have a lot of community needs, individual district needs, and I'm just concerned that it won't allow us the flexibility to have a strong presence for our superintendent, not knowing how much time is going to be required. I understand that these, this is going to be after hours, but it also requires a lot of prep time for the lesson plans for this class, a lot of review time, the work that they turn into him as a professor, our superintendent as a professor. And I'm just wondering what will be the availability of us superintendent given those specific circumstances? And also the, the position that he's currently in as the superintendent is incredibly stressful and can be overwhelming at times, and I think that that's something that this board needs to consider.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Mohammed, and timekeeper. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Till, for those concerns. I don't know if, what I'm really sure is going to ease any of your concerns, but I, I believe in, in the coordination of his cabinet that he has put in place, and I think that all of those things that my colleague from the fifth has mentioned, if his team that he has put together cannot continue to move that vision forward, then Houston, we have a problem. If you look across, if you look at superintendents across the nation, many of them are adjunct professors with local colleges and universities, which adds a plus to the division that they serve, because we pull teachers or graduates from those local universities and colleges to be for future employers with our school district. So I, I don't want any of our staff here this evening to have a concern about our superintendent teaching future scholars at Virginia State University because they seek him out, which, which explains and define the work ethic that this man has. So I support, fully support that. And in the past, RPS at Virginia State did not have a solid partnership in terms of their graduates from the School of Education. So hopefully our superintendent can build that relationship where we can receive many minority students from that university to come and teach some of our most troubling and challenging schools.
Sir? I, I have some trepidation about this opportunity. Not that I would want to deny the superintendent an opportunity to have, have that exposure, if you will. My concern, though, is the, you know, this first year, we, the superintendent has overturned a lot of deficiencies, if you will, in our system. And while he has put forth an academic plan and while he does have what I believe is an outstanding team, I kind of like it, liken it to, you know, the ability to be able to really focus on moving RPS or building this better district, you know. Will you, will the superintendent really have the time to be able to do both? I understand it's only one day a week, but when you think about it, it's college-level coursework, and while it may be at night, you'll have to use some of your time during you'll have to use, um, some of your time during the day to prepare for those night classes. Um, would you be willing to, uh, Dr. Benton, would you be willing to speak to how you plan to do both?
All I can share with you, Mrs. Epps, is that I've been an adjunct professor since I began high school principal, starting back in my days in George Washington University, trading, now at UTR Arlington, UNT Dallas, and on and on. And what I'm being asked to teach is, of course, I've already taught before, and most of the information is already prepared. Because I've been asked to teach school law. Most higher institutions will tell you they have a difficult time finding K-12 practitioners who focus on school law. My dissertation focuses on school law. My, uh, department head is most one of the most regarded, the most highly regarded school law professors in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Offense supports me in the material that he provides me. And I think, uh, Dr. Harris, who's sitting in the office, already had a preview of material. It was actually blown away already because most of it is already still prepared. So, it's not crazy new stuff.
Any other discussion? Ms. Taylor's second bite, and timekeeper, let us, Ms. Taylor?
It wasn't really short this week. Um, I appreciate that, you know, many others are going to pull that out, superintendent, and want the skill set that he brings to the table. But I feel that we, as a board, hired him to move RPS forward. And that's my main focus, that he'll be able to concentrate his attention more hardly to our RPS students because they deserve that. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Saying that, a clerk, could we rezone the vote?
Yes, the motion you're voting on was made by Mrs. Harris Mohammed, seconded by Mr. Bumrah. And it's to authorize the superintendent to accept the adjunct teaching position at Virginia State University, Mr. Sterneman?
Yeah.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bumrah?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinky Abs?
No.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion fails, it's seven to two. I'm sorry, five to... Six to, I can't...
Oh, man. You are not a graduate of which we're probably... She's my friend, though.
The next item is 503. Discuss the status of the Human Resources Committee.
Okay, colleagues, it has, um, been requested by previous members of the Human Resources Committee to, uh, reestablish that committee. We had decided, uh, to not have that committee, and afterwards requested it be to have it on the agenda tonight for, uh, discussion. We have, for this discussion, allotted fifteen minutes. And I want to hold us to that. So, at this point, is anyone who wants to speak to this item? Um, this is interesting. Does anyone want to speak to this item? Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Um, I just wanted to, just give all due respect to the person that we were requesting me to chair, and see if she wanted to say a few words when the audience ended the conversation. Shawn, you have to...
Well, my, my words are around the fact that, at this point, um, I, I felt that we had decided that, um, we were moving forward without that committee. Um, but that was just my perspective. And I was asked to put it on the agenda. It's on the agenda so we can finalize it. So, I don't want to think it's Mr. Coleman's decision. It's a board decision whether or not we have, uh, that committee.
Okay, well, I just wanted to see if she wanted to speak first to the issue. I would be more than happy to get some of the background because I've been doing a lot of the communication.
Okay, Ms. Mohammed?
Yes, um, thank you also very much. I've, um, had the opportunity to reach out to several board members today to have a conversation. I've also had a, a very good conversation with the superintendent this afternoon, um, about this committee. I, I must apologize to several board members because I am in a mode of testing. In my school district, I was not able to communicate with all eight board members this afternoon. But as of, um, this morning, my professional life is going to change a little bit. So, I will not be able to, um, chair or serve on the committee because of some increase of, um, um, duties that I will be having. Um, that doesn't mean that I will not be able to continue to serve as a board member, so I wanted to be clear on that. But because of the increase in tasks that I have, that's going to be coming up very shortly, preparing for the next school year, I will, I cannot, um, take on additional tasks as I thought I was going to be able to do. So, um, I will not be able to chair or serve on that committee. Um, so, I just, and I know that's disappointing, but I'm just, you know, I'd rather be honest and upfront than try to take on something that I know I'm not going to be able to give a hundred percent to. The conversation that I had with the superintendent today, because I, I wanted to have a conversation with him about it, and I wanted him to make, I wanted to make certain that he knew that, um, I was not declining because I did not want to work directly with him because that's one of the things that, in that role, a chair would have to do of any committee. Um, he understands my concerns. I shared with him some of the things that I think we need to have in place if the board will support it. Um, I feel very strongly that he has someone on his cabinet that will be able to continue to oversee, um, any challenges, concerns, or what have you that we have in our Human Resources Department. So, I really appreciate the time that the superintendent took with me today. We had a very good conversation about the direction, not only of the district, but also of that department. So, I just wanted to say that to all board members while we're present, I know one is absent. But it's critically important for me, for people to know that I am fully dedicated to serving in this role and this district.
Thirty seconds.
But I, you're giving me thirty seconds on my speech?
Thirty seconds.
Um, but I wanted to share with everyone at the same time that, um, you know, too, I am an educator and I have a lot, um, in my role that I do. And so, you know, my duties are going to be changing and increasing, so I just need to be prepared for that. So, I appreciate the time, Chair, uh, Mr. Chairman, that you have given me to explain that.
Okay.
Can I follow up?
Follow up, Ms. Taylor?
Um, I would like to make a request that that discussion be moved up to the agenda. Uh, this is information that is just coming to us for the first time. Uh, congratulations to you and all you members for the upcoming school year. Very proud of you. Um, and so, because it's kind of a mute subject, we don't have the three members to consider. If we could bring it back to the table at a later date when, when that changes, and then we can have a full discussion that will be based on what can actually come to fruition.
Okay, at this point, um, we do not, it's what you're saying, we do not have three people who want to, uh, serve on that committee at this time.
Exactly, it's not, Miss Harris Mohammed was, Miss Harris Mohammed. Sorry about that, baby. Um, yeah, because of that, then we don't have the three people now, so we would like to go back to the drawing board and come back when we have all of the elements in place.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Ms. Taylor. Are there any other comments about this committee?
Okay, I will ask a question, which is just a general consensus. At this point, again, the question is, do we desire to have a Human Resource Committee? And if I could get, um, not appear, something to that effect, to help me, uh, manage this going forward?
Okay.
Again, I just want to reiterate, based on my conversation that I had with the superintendent today, I, I am sure that he has a place that will oversee that department. So, I would like to, and I, I gave him, I think, um, my support in saying, "I want to see you work that first, and then, um, if it's needed, necessary, let's bring it back to the board". And I'm going to honor that, what I said to him for listening because of the value of the professional, um, relationship profession that we have. So, at this point, because I've said that to him today, I'm going to honor that, and I don't think, you know, we need to have this time, based on this conversation.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Again, if the board would like to make a motion, someone would like to make a motion, specifically, speak to this issue?
I, I would like to make a motion.
Okay, Ms. Taylor?
I would like to make a motion that we remove this discussion from the agenda and bring it back when we have the three individuals who are interested in moving forward with some support that shows, justifies our rationale as to why we feel this committee is needed. And, um, and then we'll move the motion, um, I'm sorry, action on the agenda.
Okay, remove, and second? Any discussion on this motion? Make sure I get that right. Any discussion on this motion?
Uh, I have a little bit of discussion, just slightly. Um, I would just like the board as a whole to consider that if you're going to take such a strong stance on something as serious as the HR committee, then we may want to also consider bringing back all discussions and committees as a board of the whole, as a whole. In other words, consider what we're doing with all of the other committees and why we're differentiating this one from all others. I.e., the Legislative Committee, the Facilities Task Force, and things of that sort. So, maybe if we're seriously considering not having this committee, then maybe we should consider deciding on all matters as a whole board.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Taylor? All right. Ms. Lewis is getting the motion cleared so we can have a vote. Ms. Gray?
Just one last going on. Um, it's just, in my experience, committees are supposed to work to make us more efficient and lessen the work of the full board. And that wasn't what I saw happening when we had the HR committee. It seemed to prolong discussions. There was simply one, um, time when, when the committee was operating that we didn't have to go into closed session and ask tons more questions. And I think that, um, if we're going to repeat and duplicate all the questions as a full board, it's no point in committee vetting it and then, um, you know, making us do the work doubling. So, I just don't know what the point would be.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bumrah, substitute motion?
Is that in order, Madam Clerk?
Are you trying to amend?
No, I'm trying to substitute motion. Is a substitute motion in order?
All right, Madam Clerk?
I have a follow-up to Ms. Gray's, um, comment.
What?
Could you, could you speak to and be more specific as to the issue that you all had with the HR committee? Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Taylor, this discussion, uh, is about the motion.
Yeah, that's what she spoke to, correct. That's what Ms. Gray just spoke to.
Well, I can't speak for anybody else.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on one second. Hold on one second, that's what we're going to... Again, at this point, that's, and this is my fault, okay? Let's, let's stick to the motion that is, um, on the floor, okay? So, Madam Clerk?
I, I guess I would just wanted some clarity because I'm just trying to find out for future references what it was specifically about this committee when we have several others that brought so much discomfort or so much disagreement with the, with my colleagues.
And I would encourage you that you can have those discussions, but we're going to stick to this motion, okay? Madam Clerk?
The motion was made by Mrs. Taylor, and seconded by Mrs. Pinky Abs, to move the HR discussion, I'm sorry, to move the discussion from HR committee from the agenda until a third individual can be brought in to complete the requirements for said committee. Mr. Sterneman?
No.
Ms. Gray?
No.
Mr. Bumrah? Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
No.
Mrs. Pinky Abs?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
No.
Mr. Coleman?
No.
Motion fails, six to...
All right, at this point, uh, we're going to, uh, move forward. Mr. Bumrah?
I move that we disband the HR committee?
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Okay, the motion is made by Mr. Bumrah, seconded by Mr. Sterneman, to disband the Human Resources Committee.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Mohammed?
Um, first I want, Mr. Bumrah, can you repeat your motion?
Sure, uh, it's just to disband the HR committee permanently?
I forgot that. So, based on Mr. Bumrah's discussion, I'm concerned about, um, removing it permanently because of, of two things. Um, one, the, the most recent audit that we received, we need to make sure that those actions are completed, and they have not been. And two, um, some other challenges or issues that may arise. Um, you know, we have committees that are developed to form for practical reasons that, um, is encouraged to, to move the business of the school district forward through the school board. So, I would be very concerned if we were to eliminate that committee altogether because of the history of concerns that this board had when we came together in 2013. Um, and again, because we have outstanding, uh, bullets in our audit that has yet to be completed, I am confident that, um, again, after having the conversation with the superintendent today, that, that information will continue to be a focal point and a priority. Um, however, I think we, we need to not eliminate it altogether, but maybe temporarily suspend it, but have the option of bringing it back just in case we have some things that arise and, and we need it.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. All right, Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. Um, I would like to make a friendly amendment that we...
Um, I would like to make a friendly amendment, that we suspend the, um, HR committee until the end of the school year, and then we'll give superintendent an opportunity to put some of our concerns on the forefront, make them a priority, and then we'll come back to the table to address how to deal with the committee on a permanent basis. Um, my recommendation from the amendment is to suspend the HR committee through the end of the school year, that'll give our superintendent an opportunity to address some of the HR, um, concerns, both, both through the HR audit and through us as individual board members. And then we can come back at that time, say July 1, and, um, readdress the concerns and get an update as to the status of what's happening in our HR department.
Alright, Ms. Taylor. That's the form, not motion, it is what it is, um, and, you know, one of the reasons that we originally instituted this HR committee was because we had, these are my words, not anybody else's, but collectively, I believe we did not enjoy any level of confidence in our HR process, um, that gave us comfort. Uh, and I heard Ms. Mohammed, Ms. Harris Mohammed, excuse me, say earlier, um, in her discussion with the superintendent, that she's comfortable, she's confident, after talking with him, excuse me, uh, that those processes have been strengthened, and that the, the kinks and the, the, the shortcomings, the gaps that we, we have, or we feel like we have, are going to be addressed. And as such, um, I think our confidence level has over time gotten higher, and will, will continue to rise. And so, we, we have, um, spent an inordinate amount of time dealing with HR issues for any number of reasons. Uh, and so, um, I think that, that time has come and gone, such that we have people in place and we're doing things differently from a business perspective, that obviate the need for the committee. Uh, and so, um, I certainly appreciate the offer of amendment, but I'd like to blow out my motion as it is, Ms. Taylor.
I can appreciate, um, your hearing of what Ms. Harris Mohammed had to say about our conversation. I think that that's to be commended, to have that kind of communication amongst board members and our superintendent. But may I might I ask, did you hear what she said following up to that post your, um, your motion? That she was concerned about what was happening with the HR audit, as well as the concerns that we all as board members have had with, um, the way things have been run in our HR department? Did that, did you capture that information?
My response, Ms. Taylor. Yes, I certainly did hear that, um, but my response to that would be a couple things. One, uh, we have been through a series of audits, different departments, different operational perspectives of this school system. We have not set up committees to oversee the implementation of those audit recommendations, nor do I think we would entertain an idea like that. So I, I did hear that, um, I think all of us are concerned with the HR audit, just as we are with the accounts payable, transportation, all the audits that we're seeing, because we have to do those things in order to, to build the district and the system that we want, because every dollar that we're spending unwisely is one less dollar that we're using to educate children. And so, we're all vested in the success or failure of our implementation of the audit recommendation. So, um, I did hear that, I appreciate it. Um, and one final thing, Mr. Chairman, I have a pending question.
Mr. Born, can you repeat? I couldn't hear the end of your statement.
I, I moved the pending question, or, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Point of personal privilege, please.
This, this, Ms. Timekeeper, how much time does Ms. Taylor have?
Isn't that a, isn't that a motion that supersedes all other discussions?
It doesn't, it doesn't.
It does, yes, it does, it does.
It doesn't.
Is that right, Madam Attorney?
Hold on, hold on, Ms. Taylor, turn it over, please.
Point of personal privilege is for items that are of emergency, insurance, and like that. Um, it's up to the chair to determine whether or not the nature of what, um, this, uh, tier request will take precedent. Um, if determination is that it does not, at this point, the discussion, um, you all have to go to the closing session.
Timekeeper.
And you have to.
Hold on, Ms. Taylor, Timekeeper.
Forty-eight seconds.
Forty-eight seconds. You have forty-eight seconds.
Okay, I just want to say that
Parlative, Ms. Taylor.
I'm sorry, the chair has spoken, and you're not gonna talk over this.
Hold on, Ms. Taylor.
You are not going to talk over this.
Please, please.
You're not gonna do it.
Ms. Taylor, Ms. Taylor, we just referred to the attorney. Would you please allow me to have the tour? Mr. Born, I was just driven by the attorney, and it was up to me to decide.
I, I just have a parlaying.
Okay, great, thank you.
Go ahead. Um, it, it was my understanding that moving the pending question is equivalent to calling the question. And as such, that motion supersedes all other motions, and it is, it is one that requires a vote.
Can you show that to me on the record, please? Because I'm understanding that the point of personal privilege is my right, and this time that you're taking to put that forward, I couldn't be speaking my piece.
Point of personal privilege.
You speak to the mic.
I'm sorry. Point of personal privilege, um, if it is accepted, it takes precedent. And, um, again, I have not heard what Ms. Taylor is going to talk about, but it's up to the chair to determine if that is an appropriate point of personal privilege.
Thank you for the response, that's all, I was looking for.
Thank you, just what you would have done in a, in a way that's in order. Um, I just want to say that, this is about me in particular, that is very concerning for me, that something as critical as our HR department, you all will want to disband it, and to me, that speaks volumes as to why. You know, I've had the opportunity to hear from you all as individuals about your concerns, and, and why those concerns have suddenly evaporated, I don't understand, but it's very concerning for me, that it would just disappear, and now this is of no importance. This is not the first time that a committee that I've been a part of has been disbanded. We had the multicultural task force as well. And still to date, there is no justification as to why these committees are being disbanded, except for the fact that I'm a part of it. So I just want the constituents to know, I want the staff to know, I want the public to know.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, you finish your thought, thank you.
Can I catch my thought? This is my last sentence. That you have a school board representative who is not afraid to shake things up, to remove the veil that is out there, and expose whatever is going on that my colleagues do not want you all to know, you can trust that those veils will be removed.
Thank you so much, Ms. Taylor. Alright, we have a question to close the discussion, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Born made the motion to close the session, seconded by Mr. Sterneman. Mr. Sterneman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor? This is to close the session. Ms. Harris Mahoney?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Born?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Pinky Adams?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
And Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
And that, that is, yeah, Mr. Born was made by Mr. Born, seconded by Mr. Sterneman, to disband the human resources committee permanently. Mr. Sterneman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Harris Mahoney?
No.
Mrs. Pinky Adams?
No.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Ms. Epps.
Motion passes for years, three days' worth of extension.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
The next item is to receive for action budget transfers.
Ms. Chair. Okay, hold on one second, our student has leave. Let's give this young man another round of applause. Thank you so much. Um, Mr. Sterneman, could you, gotta use your mic. Excuse me, I mean, did you want to say anything before you leave?
Alright, there you go. It was an awesome time to be here in this school board meeting, and I had a wonderful opportunity to observe things.
Alright, thank you so much. Okay.
Um, there is one, uh, budget transfer request that requires your approval, and the multitude of others are for your information. Um, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Born?
Is it the first one to tell in our packet?
Yes, sir. And just to alert you.
Point of clarification, Ms. Chair, can, can you read this something?
Did you have a question? Okay, is that?
Which, which budget transfer you speak to?
It's, it's the first one. There, there is a cover that says for school board approval, and then there is another series that says for information. Hopefully, if you flip.
What's mine say for school board approval?
You might have two copies of the same. The, the first one, the ninety-eight thousand sixty-five dollar transfer requires your approval, because it is over the ten thousand dollar threshold. And then the others are simply attached for your information.
Ms. Epps.
These are function codes are, is this basically movement within public transportation to another area of transportation?
It is, it's, it's moving from, um, the line item, various line items, to satisfy the contracted services with vehicle first, and to pay for student transportation for McKinney-Bentham. If you have specific questions, I'd be happy to go line by line.
What are the line items? Where do you get the money from?
The first one is object code fifty-four-ten, which is, uh, service contracts. The second is fifty-five-ten, which is advertising. The third, in the amount of four thousand two sixty-five, is fifty-seven-fifty. That is for, um, awards. The fourth line item is fifty-seven-seventy, that is for garage services. And the final is fifty-six-ten, which is supplies.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Born?
Quick question, uh, the, and this, you can email the answer, we don't have to go through it now. Um, our contract of first week vehicle services, is that a consolidated contract with the city of Richmond? Or do we have an individual contract if they have an individual contract?
Individual, separate from the cities.
Forty-seven. Madam Clerk.
The motion was made by Mr. Born, and seconded by Mr. Sterneman, to approve the budget transfers. Mr. Sterneman? Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Born? Mrs. Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Harris Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinky Adams?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes seven.
Mr. Coleman. Ms. Epps.
Would there be an appropriate, um, place to ask for a school board budget transfer? Since we're talking about transfers. It's, it's my understanding that the, uh, Elkar Cookout ran over, and there's no place on the, uh, agenda that we can be discussing.
We want to get to that, we'll get to an opportunity for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next item is to receive for action, uh, district activity requests, and, uh, requests that I do have were from several board members to transfer funds to Ms. Harris Mahoney for the, um, teacher appreciation dance. Mr. Sterneman is transferring one hundred dollars and eleven cents. Uh, Ms. Gray is transferring one thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Mr. Born is transferring one hundred dollars and eleven cents. And Dr. Jones is transferring one hundred dollars and eleven cents, for a total of two thousand two hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty-four. Ms. Gray, you have misunderstanding.
I said I don't think you had a total in your email.
Thank you, I've read your email to cover, so this amount of one hundred dollars and eleven cents.
She did say whatever I needed, but she didn't have a total in there.
For teacher appreciation, that's fine.
Thank you to those board members who, um, have given several times, I really appreciate it, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Born.
Okay, um, go ahead, Ms. Epps, and make your statement, and I won't add to it.
I received the invoice today. I had anticipated the, uh, I gave an incorrect figure when I told the school the cost of the tent, and I need to add four hundred dollars to that original five hundred dollar request for the, per, to pay for the tent.
Okay, Ms. Epps, what, what I want to suggest, um, because we, I was, we need to make sure the resources are in your account, that we bring it, um, to the next meeting, um, on, on the regular agenda. And I also commit to assist you, because I know I have resources, okay?
And I appreciate that, uh, two, two questions. One, would that hold up the process? Mr. Mohammed of Elkar called me today, and wanted to know where the money is, um, that it needed to be transferred in a timely manner. And I will point out that the last report that we received from Mr. Westbay said that I had eleven thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars in my budget.
And we are working to clarify, uh, what that was about. Mr. Dr. Ben.
Administratively, we can speak to the school, to understand what is deliverable, whether it's a thirty-day bill, or a fourteen-day bill. And it would be addressed in a timely manner, and then whatever happens, if we need to address it prior to, we'll just, um, find a code to pay from, and then transfer it from you all's money to that code. So we'll make sure we don't go beyond whatever the due date is.
That works.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Epps. And what, would you like to speak to, Ms. Taylor?
Um, just the same thing, while you all are doing the research on Ms. Epps, I have a report from finance from Mr. Westbay's office. It says that my account has twelve thousand dollars, and you know how much bad information's going out to the media. Um, and I'm having another report from our office at sixty-five, and I think there's a third amount, so I have three different amounts coming from my budget. So if you all could look into that as well, very much appreciated.
Alright, we will do that, thank you, Ms. Taylor. Um, Ms. Dr. Ben would like to address that.
Formers, you remember, one of the comments was made, is that, uh, Mrs. Lewis keeps a spreadsheet in her office. She's in the process, as I understand, of forwarding that to Mr. Westbay, so that he can update the actual account. And that's why you have a discrepancy between the two. She has a running sheet that puts her to. I think Mrs. Lewis is working with Mr. Westbay to make sure they reconcile together, because some bills had come that he did show in his report, if I remember correctly, at that time. And they may have done that already, but that was, he's a month ago.
And mine, I was getting three different reports, so it's not like it's just two conflicting.
Okay.
Departments, it's three different reports.
Yeah, Mr. Westbay. Yeah, Mrs. Westbay?
Yes, sir. There was a, there's a mechanism in the accounting system that where we have to link certain accounts to other control accounts for budget control purposes. There were several accounts in the school board, because we said one day this year that weren't linked properly. So, the one set of reports wasn't providing the same results as others, but we've given the correct numbers that related to Mrs. Lewis at this point, who's communicated the right balance, right? You have the correct balance, the true balance that they have left in their accounts at this point. We just, and we have since corrected the linkage in those budgetary control accounts so that the next time we run the reports from the AS400 don't match the balances that you have, the true balance. So, we, you do have the right number, I'll put it that way, even though I know you got reports showing two different numbers or three different numbers.
Okay. All right.
Mrs. Westbay, I'm a little bit concerned because Mrs. Lewis has indicated that she's getting those numbers from the finance department.
Okay, we'll make sure we get it.
We'll make sure we get this. Thank you very much. All right, Madam Clerk?
You need a motion to approve the district activity for Ms. Harris Muhammad.
Is there a second? Move the second. The district activities for our teaching provision.
And I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
Mr. Bourne?
Thank you, Mr. Bourne. Mr. Sternman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Muhammad?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinky Abs?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes seven. The next item on the agenda is moving business.
Ms. Stern?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last couple of years, meeting with teachers, which a lot of us do on a daily or weekly basis, and they bring ideas to us, and we implement them to the extent that we can. For a long time, I've wanted to create a teacher advisory board, a, a board of Richmond public school teachers that are appointed by the school board that comes and can advise us on important issues, once a quarter, twice a year. I don't know exactly what it looks like, and I'm not going to put it forward for a motion tonight because it's not on the agenda, but I want to put the idea out there for my colleagues to consider that before the end of the school year, we work on creating a teacher advisory board to help advise this school board on things that are important for Richmond Public Schools and moving us forward. And so, I will get with Mr. Coleman to put that on the agenda, but I wanted to put that idea out there. Please feel free to email me or call me with your ideas and how we can make a better idea.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stern. Ms. Taylor?
I would like to add on that to that for consideration, that we put together a student advisory board as well, to bring that perspective and give our children the opportunity to enhance their public speaking skills and to also enhance their critical thinking as they put together what they observe throughout the district.
All right, thank you, Ms. Taylor. Ms. Harris Muhammad?
I am very excited to hear that because you all think back to two thousand and thirteen, I can't, I mentioned that. So, yes, but I just, and I put this in an email to you, Mr. Stern, but I don't want us to begin thinking about choosing teachers of the year, because we have so many, so many outstanding leaders in our teachers. And possibly to expand it to departments in each district, but we can talk about how that, how that can look, because you know, we have bus drivers that service our kids, we have counselors and those individuals as well. So, yes, I'm glad to hear you bring that back up, and I support that whenever we can start that, and the student advisory board as well.
Okay, Mrs. Epps?
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Dr. Bennett, I'd like to maybe have you weigh in on this. I know that early on in your tenure, you indicated that you would probably create a few advisory boards. And so, I guess I would like to hear from you as to the impact of the board actually creating these advisory boards and then ultimately having these ongoing meetings with teachers and your comfort level with that activity.
I just want to, I guess we'll make the board aware that we have TSAC that began, started, and running this year, which is Teacher Staff Advisory Council, that we have had, I think, three meetings with thus far. So, like they have been our mechanism to discuss and get feedback on the budget, on the facilities plan, for example. TSAC, because it has, all the teachers of the year are invited to serve on it, and we did that as a neutral way to decide who, because that's theoretically the people who their peers selected as their best teacher. And then we also had the staff piece was because we felt like there needed to be staff representing support staff in the group. And so, we've manned at least three times this year over at QAnon and the Forum. We also have VSAC, excuse me, Sback, which is Superintendent's Business Advisory Council, which began this year. And then next year, Mr. Jeffers and Mrs. Jones are supposed to be in the process of developing a mechanism for us to have a student version of those committees also representing secondary local students.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bennett.
So, two of the three are running already.
Any follow-up, Ms. Epps?
Yes, please. So, I guess I want to have some more discussion about, you know, you're discussing with teachers, so what do you do when a teacher comes and says, a teacher indicates an early charge? Is this advisory board going to address that?
All right, Ms. Epps, one of the things, again, Mr. Stern, to talk about would be that we would, he just is opening this up for discussion. So, I think that'll be one of the points, if we could gather our points, try to share them with Mrs. Stern and myself to see what we're talking about. We're probably going to talk to Dr. Bennett as he expresses what they have, so this is the start of a discussion. Okay? Thank you. Okay, Ms. Lawson?
Switching gears for a moment, I wanted to mention that I was at the, at West River Hills on Friday, and Dr. Leonard was there as well, and they had their first leadership day for their leader-in-the-program, and it was really wonderful. The school is fully implementing this program with a grant they received. The staff and the students are completely engaged in this program. It was a wonderful event, and when you all have time, I recommend you go out and see what they're doing there. Also, West River also has a festival coming up on June 6th from eleven AM to three PM. And I know a lot of us here have young kids, and it's a really fun event, especially to celebrate the end of the school year.
All right, Madam Clerk?
The next item is closed session.
Pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty has admitted, I moved that the school board of the city of Richmond could be in closed session to discuss prospective candidates for employment in the assignment of employment promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers or employees of the division, including consideration of the human resources agenda of this day and employee matters.
Motion was made by Ms. Harris Muhammad and was seconded by Ms. Pinky Abs. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? You are now reclosed.